I'm at 6:00 PM with Council, City of Denison, and we're meeting in two regular sessions. Tonight's the vacation, we give my pastor Brad Castle, please have his church. Court, please. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Me too.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, we approach your throne asking you to give discernment and wisdom as decisions are made that will affect citizens of this city. I ask you to bless our city. I ask you, Lord, to just be with us and all the decisions that are made will be ones that glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I want to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into the consent agenda, Cap, if you would, welcome again. Thank you for your...
I'm still going through remedial. My fifth trip through. And I'm Cap Chesser, I'm with Leadership Denison Institute, and we have a fabulous class this year. Thirteen students, I think they all made it over here from dinner, and I'm gonna have them introduce themselves individually and say where they have worked.
Fantastic.
Good evening, Council. My name is Cynthia Pujon. I'm the Director of Business Development at Texoma Medical Center.
Hello, everyone. My name is Melanie Truxell, and I work at Grayson College.
Hi, Nicole Thornhill. I work at Texoma Health Foundation.
Hello, I'm Jordan Holsbach. I work at Radio Vision.
Hello, Johnny Waite from American Bank of Texas.
Aaron Schmitz, the Creekmore Apartments.
Gwen Braxton, substitute teacher for Denison ISD. No full-time employment.
Jessica Deuce, American Bank of Texas.
Brendan Ruggs, Assistant DA for the county.
Dustin Merzon, chiropractor at Denison Chiropractic.
Jimmy Crayman, I work for Denison ISD.
And I think y'all don't make it.
Very good. Well, welcome. Glad that you're here. The Denison Leadership Institute really is a phenomenal nine-month journey. I guess it's nine months, right?
Yes.
That you'll be on, and really, we hope that at the end of this, that we'll see all of you getting plugged into the Denison community. It's a great place to be a part of, and we thank y'all for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Agenda item number two, consent agenda.
Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Malvern, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like a sign. Motion carries. Mr. Speaker, we almost pulled Tap Tap Humanity out just to get you on that microphone again. We do recognize you're here, and we miss you. We appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Agenda item three, eight, done listens. Ms. Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a couple of projects up for demolition. On August the 4th, 2015, Daniel Miles and Lou Freeman State, property owners of 1112 West Day, were given notice to repair or demolish this structure. The structure is not wetter tied. It's open, so it's an attractive nuisance. You can see that the roof condition is poor. This is the inside. A record of the violation notices an unsafe condition of the property are on file in the building department. I'm asking the council to declare this structure an unsafe structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. The next one. On August 4th, 2015, Diana Flores, the property owner of 330 West Day, was given notice to repair or demolish the structure. This structure is also not wetter tied. It has some foundation issues. The kitchen floor, it's hard to tell that it's buckling up. It's also an attractive nuisance. It's open. This is, one of the exterior walls has a hole in it. A record of the violations notices an unsafe condition of the property are on file in the building department. I'm asking the council to declare this structure an unsafe structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to either of these properties? Come forward, please. Name an address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Diana Forrest, and the address is 330 West Day. I'm waiting to ask for an extension.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I have proof that I have funds in the account to fix it within the six months. Do you guys wanna give me that extension?
Okay. So, did you receive the letters?
I did.
In the period, and so what brings you to dealing with it tonight as opposed to several weeks before tonight?
We live in Dallas, so we were waiting for a project to close, and it finally closed, and now we have the funds to repair this property.
Okay. So, what is council's customary is when we have someone that thinks they can salvage the property, and Betty, I assume that this is one, that if they do the right things, can bring it back up to code? It's a lot of work ahead, right? So, what is customary is we'll give you ten days to pull the permit, six months to complete the work, but what I would encourage you and implore you to do is make sure that you visit with staff to ensure that you understand everything that's gonna need to take place in order to get it to code, because what I don't wanna see is you get into the project and you spend some of your own private dollars, and then it doesn't meet the codes and it still has to get demolished. We're very serious about cleaning up our community, and properties like this are the reason we're doing that. So, we want you to be successful. We want you to, six months from now, to have a property that is usable, but again, just, it's gotta be safe, it's gotta be up to code, and that's the only way to really know that is to sit down with the building official and make sure that you know what you have in mind.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to any of these two properties? They're being on the public hearings, close discussion from council. A motion?
I move to approve demolition of both properties, however, giving the owner of the opportunity to bring 330 West Day into compliance.
By getting ten days...
Ten days permit and six months to complete.
Second. Have a motion, Councilman Guy, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four A, resolution authorizing incentives for builders in single-family housing. Gabe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Have a resolution for your review and approval tonight. Just a brief bit of background, the mayor held a meeting with builders, building community on October 7th, discussed some plans to encourage further single-family residential construction. As you're aware, we're experiencing a lot of increased activity. Just to run through what was proposed is a 50% waiver of building permit fees, two halls for solid waste containers. Builder could enter into a Chapter 380 incentive agreement, which would allow for them to receive three years of sitting property tax, taxes rebated back to the builder of the home, and then 1% of sales tax rebate eligible on purchases made within the city of Denison. The caveats with this program is that the projects couldn't be within a current terms, so gateway village or mature development, and it could be an affordable housing project. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gabe. And I just wanna add, as we look at continuing to find ways to address our housing issues amongst the city, we're looking for innovative ways to tackle housing of all areas. Affordable housing program that we launched last year at this time has been a huge success. We've seen several, several lots turn into homes, or the potential of turning into affordable homes. This is the next step in seeing that go citywide, but with a different twist. As Gabe mentioned, we're not looking to reincentivize what we've already done with the two tourist districts or the affordable housing area, but find a way to help the builder in the lots of other kind of areas in our city, or even infield. There's quite a surplus in certain subdivisions that have the opportunity. The unique thing about this proposal is that the rebate, which is where they really can help their cash flow, the rebate goes to the builder regardless of the ownership of the home. So, the idea would be that the builder builds a home on spec perhaps, or even with an owner in mind, and then for the next three years, the city portion of that tax would be rebated to the builder as the incentive for them. I don't think incentive to the owner makes your buying decision to buy a $150,000 or $300,000 house, but perhaps if you build enough of these houses, the example that I've been using, if a builder built five homes of $175,000 in value, that tax rebate $17,000 over three years to the builder. And so, again, as we look to encourage building in Denison, encourage homeownership in Denison and building single-family dwellings that we need, this is the way to, again, just get that conversation started.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution authorizing incentives for builders.
I think you pretty much addressed it. I was just curious what the potential monetary value was for a builder.
And the illustration I gave, that was on top of them, so they did... I mean, you get it for each home you build on the actual tax value, tax that was paid, so it's a rebate back to the builder on the tax that was paid. Have a motion from Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Malvern, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion carries. That's another big, big move forward for the city of Denison for housing. Thank you, Gabe, and Judd, and also Mr. Kye for helping work through that. Agenda item four B, financial policies or reserve requirements. Ms. Flagger.
Yes, Mayor and members of the council, we're here tonight to receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the amendments made to the council policy statement on general financial policies and reserve requirements. The city of Denison adopted a set of financial policies on December 12, 2011, and established a foundation of standard financial requirements the staff could use to implement standard operating practices for the conduct of the city's financial affairs. Council's request of this policy to be updated to reflect the best practice recommendations approved by the Government Finance Officer Association in September of 2015. The changes affect the unassigned balances above the general fund and the water and sewer fund. They will be now between 60 and 90 days of expenditures. Currently, the general fund is set at 73 to 110, and the water and sewer fund is set at 55 to 91. And the policy establishes these fund balance requirements for the general fund and the utility fund and water sewer fund. At the end of fiscal year 2015, as anticipated, the general fund and the state fund balance will be at 70 days, and water sewer fund balance at 61 days. Council approved the original policy in 2011, and staff recommends approval of this amendment of financial policy statement.
And based on the publications that you've referenced here, that's best practice?
Correct.
I most approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Broly, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four C, to the potential of the city hosting an outdoor skating rink in December of 2016. Got everybody excited, thinking you're about to get some skating on. Apparently, it takes us 14 months to manufacture the ice. Donald, welcome.
Mayor and Council, we're just bringing this to you tonight because we want to get your input and buy-in if we were to undertake this, and it is an undertaking. When I was in Durant, we did it for two years, and it was quite successful. Now, by successful, I don't mean that we made oodles and gobs of money. We came within $2,000 of breaking even, which we considered a great investment. We felt like we got about $100,000 worth of advertising value out of that, so, you know, there was a lot of income contributions and things like that. So, you know, really, the city council has hired the city managers, and the last two city managers said they're crazy about Christmas, and so they challenged us to come up with something, and so here's why we're having this discussion, because we wanna do something that would knock it out of the park. So, let's see if I can get this to work, which I probably can't.
Just click over, don't hit on that.
Not that.
Click right there.
Right there?
Under the...
The other one.
You've got that.
There we go. Did I miss anything? Okay. So, the supplier is out of Houston, and it's the same supplier that we used in Durant, Houston, the Woodlands, and very, very impressed with them, have good relationship with them. They bring a turnkey installation, which would include a 40 by 60 rink, and that holds a maximum of 70 skaters at one time. That is one of the smaller rinks, and so the price just goes up the more you put into it. So, the proposed timeline would be, you know, we talked about trying to do it this year, but you really need time to solicit sponsorships, probably what you're most interested in, the financial impact of it, and so to do it right, we felt like we really needed time to solicit those sponsorships, so this timeline would give us that. We also, I personally feel like that we need to go ahead and get started as soon as possible, because that means that they're not gonna contract with anybody else in our area. You know, somebody jumped out and said they wanted to do one, and it also gives us the commitment from council that you're interested in it, so we can go out and try to solicit funds to help secure sponsorships for it. So, that's, I guess, the urgency. We're discussing it now. Of course, we would plan and market it all year, and then we would have to get the electrical power completed, and we'd have to work with Encore and then also electrician to make that happen. The rink would be open from November 25th to January 3rd, so that's in the neighborhood of Thanksgiving until after New Year's. That's also flexible, too, when it could be open, you know, fewer days. If you're not, Thanksgiving is their heavy season. Everybody wants their rink open by Thanksgiving, so if you delayed it some, you might be able to get a little bit lower price, but you just have to determine if, you know, the price difference is worth it. Cost of rink, the contract that we were presented, you know, those details, was $75,500. Payment terms are listed there, 25% upon execution, oh, sorry, 50% on delivery of the rink, which would come, you know, in November, and then 25% when they complete the installation, before we get any skaters on the rink. Requirements are three-phase, 48 volt, 400 amp power. That's the kicker, because that's, you just don't find that everywhere. It's gonna be, we gotta work with Encore to make sure that it's accessible where we want it, and it's affordable. We've got different prices from them, and so we still would need to do some work with them to get that in the neighborhood that it's affordable. Water source, we would have to have water next to the rink wherever we locate it, and we would have to have a level surface, which could be done, creating sort of a sandbox. It's a modular railing system where you could put rink advertising on it, and you would put banners, or not banners, but decals, a piece of decals on it to promote the sponsors and give them, you know, some value from it. The maintenance is handheld, so we're not gonna have any zambonis out there. It's a personal, it's like a big squeegee, and it's not all that fun either. Anyway, that's for the size of the rink. Other details, you know, it's white, poly-facing, where you can put the logos on it, and then it gives us 150 pairs of rental equipment, skates, and it's sharpened. This is just kind of a rough budget based on what we did in Durant. That, we had a lot of volunteer labor, so we also added labor in here of $7,000. Tried to go a little bit high on that, just so we would be safe. Again, to make up, that's a total of $95,500. To make that up, start with the skater revenue. We, in Durant, we got 47 79 paid skaters in one year, and so I felt like 5,000 was a pretty easy, easily attainable number. We charge $7. They say you charge the price like a movie ticket, it would be comparable to a movie ticket, and so I went with eight, and that gives us $40,000, so we're almost halfway there. That means we would have to work really hard if we were to break even on the sponsorships, and that would give us $55,500. That's going to be a challenge, and so we would have to have a lot of help to do that. In Durant, we were quite successful with sponsorships. Our larger sponsor gave us $20,000. I don't know that we're going to have that, you know, that luck, but it was quite amazing how easy the sponsorships were to sell. It was just so unique, and people were interested in it. Ice Free Convent is the largest installer and operator of seasonal ice skating facilities and it's outdoor ice skating rinks. You're probably familiar with the outdoor NHL arena that's put up there, involved in that, and so they're, you know, they're skilled at it. They were always a call away when we had issues, and, you know, some of those might be a lot of wind, which makes it watery on top of the ice, and you gotta figure out what to do, and a chiller, you know, going off, so they were always there when we needed them. Installation is their primary focus. They have over 35 years of experience, and then I've got two years working with them. And so, the rest of this is just pictures. That is the tubular system that goes underneath the rink, and it is placed on a sandbox, and basically, it's just kind of a, almost like a garbage sack under it that would keep the water from going out. And the next one is with that, the rink walls built on it, that tubular has coolant that goes through it, so it's just pumped through it, and that's what keeps the ice cool. And then after that, to make it, you see in the old-fashioned sprinklers that, you know, just go like that, they just take one of those, and it just kind of sprinkles ice over it and evens it out, and they do that part. Then this is the ice rink. What I wanted to show in the background is the chiller. So, if you can see the blue structure, it's a Greco chiller, and it is a monstrosity. But, anyway, that's what powers the rink. Over to the end of that, over here on the side, I guess it'd be the right side, is the power source that we created for this. And then that's when people skate. You can see some of the, you know, the rink advertising on the walls. Behind it is what we had for the skate hut the first year, so we just got a portable building and got shelving and put the skates on those. That's also where we had our mini concession stand, and we took the money from people that wanted to skate. And then this is one of my favorite pictures of all times. We had a lot of school kids that came in, and so they brought groups, and we had some southeastern students that helped us with skating and volunteering, and one of the children was in a wheelchair, and they were able to get him out there, and so you can imagine the impact that that had on the young man, that he was able to ice skate. Some of my other favorites were like a 78-year-old man and about the same age lady that had skates when they were kids, and they just had kept them all these years and wanted to use them, and so we had people that helped them get on the ice. So, a lot of hopes and dreams, and it was a lot of fun, but a lot of hard work. So, I will, basically, I don't have anything else, just let you ask all the questions that you have, and then we can proceed.
Donald, why the 700 block?
We talked about three things. Of course, I want it downtown.
Yeah, she's just waiting.
Yeah.
Trying to get any ancillary sales tax dollars from people shopping, and she's running another end.
So, our options, we felt, and, you know, Sonny Mackey's been in this, and of course, we've visited with the city manager and had discussions about it. So, we looked at for Heritage Park, and we don't own that park, and so that was a little bit of a deterrent. We wouldn't wanna kill the grass that's under it, and, you know, so we felt like maybe we could close the street beside it on Burnett and put it there, so that's one option, but we would have to close the street there. Another option is Forest Park. The best power source is down at the other end of the football stadium, so that is even farther away from, you know, the businesses. And then the other is the 700 block, which we own. The drawback, honestly, for the 700 block is it's a huge block, and this rink is not that huge, and it's going to be dwarfed, so we would have to work really hard to create ancillary things there. So, it's all open. It may be less expensive from Encore to locate it somewhere else, so the location is not nailed down, and we can look at a variety of different options.
Well, I love the concept, and I am incredibly appreciative that we're looking, that we did not try to rush this for this year, that we're looking out 12, 13 months so that we can kind of, even though I know you've done this before and it's been successful, so I'm very appreciative of that. I really don't like the location. I think it's better suited if we can get it into downtown, you know, it makes more sense. It seems more, you know, I just, I think that I would really appreciate some thought into that from the standpoint of having it more nestled into downtown. I think we'd see more benefit from that. Anyway, I love the idea, I love the concept. I think it is unique. Donald, will it be, it'll be minutes, so we do it after dark?
Right, right, and that would just be something we'd have to work into, possibly renting portable lots, but yeah, it would be a minute.
One other thing, from standpoint of labor, you know, if at all possible, I think we're better off, because this would be something that'd be open every night, every day.
Right.
You know, that's a lot for volunteers. I mean, it's one thing for us to give volunteers to some of our individual events, but that's a long season to try to coordinate, and I think that we do realistically budget in some paid labor to try to do that versus using that as all-volunteer army, because that's a long season you're talking about and a lot of hours.
What's the typical hours of operation, like we did in Durant?
We had it open during the school year for school groups to come, and so we could open it like at 10:00 AM in the morning, but it wasn't open to the public, it was a private party. So, on school days, we opened it at 4:00 and closed at 10:00. On the weekends, we would open at 1:00 and go to 10:00, but we had private parties in the morning, so it would be like sponsored parties. So, it was closed to the public in the morning, but it was 1:00 to 10:00. On, like, the holiday, the school holiday, we would open at 1:00 to 10:00.
Something I think would be a good idea. I know you wanna have it downtown, but if you could coordinate it with the light show at Loy Lake, you know, if you got the power out there, but you've got that audience circling through there, and I think that would be a real draw for this skating. I really like that concept of it, too. That's great, Chris. Thank you.
Donald, just one comment. I love Christmas, too. I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you.
Well, we could do two rinks, one at Loy Lake and one downtown.
You could set a cost model on there.
You could freeze the pond out there, maybe.
I think you'll have luck with the sponsors, especially you on it now, because, you know, a lot of companies, at least the larger ones, they're planning their sponsorship dollars now for next year. because, you know, a lot of companies, at least the larger ones, they're planning their sponsorship dollars now for next year.
Right.
So I wouldn't delay, especially once you know they're our typical ones for the heavy hitters that they're planning now, sure.
So I guess I'll need direction, do we bring it back and look at the contract? Do you work that out with the city manager?
I'd suggest that probably give us maybe till first or second quarter of next year to see what we can tie up as far as sponsorships, and I think we'll have a better feel for the budget if it's going to pan out as planned, and then we'll bring it back before you and get a formal approval. It's, again, we got to start this real early, because the fourth op needs to be there and then planning efforts, so we can bring it back maybe in springtime, but revisit it if necessary. And, you know, significant part of that cost is one-time cost. Those in there with the electrical, you don't have that every year.
Well, you have the power, but you wouldn't have the electrical.
So long as you're in the same place, you don't have to move.
We can have one challenge, so if we wait to springtime, then you're trying to get the sponsors that are talking, talking December time, trying to decide what they want to do there. We're going to start trying to sneak that out.
Well, yeah, we'll, I think we'll start now with the sponsorships and see where we're at.
It would come between dick.
Yeah.
Broke up the package. Do we need to tie anything down with the supplier, the vendor?
We're looking for financing.
Yeah, the down payment in the contract, I would assume they withheld it for us, but, you know, that's not guaranteed until we sign the contract with them.
Yeah, so the contract will bring back to council as well for approval. So if you can get them to wait till, in the first, they do that.
And it gets to the dollar, or not? No, I'm asking, let me read it on your place if this.
No, I prefer to do it sooner rather than later, but it's, I don't think they're gonna sort of go with somebody else. I don't think they'd rent it out from us.
How'd you say that?
You mean, like timeline?
Timeline.
We started the first year in about August and did it in the December timeframe.
You squinted in six.
Yes, we did, it was quick. And then the next year, we committed by one for it, so we had the hunger to work on it.
Let's say give you a 10 months.
Right, it would give you a lot of time.
Yeah, work starts now.
She's not going to wait to start working.
I know, but I was just trying to get an idea of what, how they ran the rents from the timeline. So to give us a little more bandwidth.
Yeah, but I understand my question too, is we're going to sell sponsorships or something, we don't overdo it. Is, I think, is that what?
Right, your Durant staff is starting to say, here's the vision we are, and the next thing we know, the vision is not this, it's that, it's a different location, and the staff will have real good guidance of what the location would be. I agree with you about being closer to downtown, near Heritage Park or someplace that we've seen. So I'm just concerned if we do it tonight, which is not much direction, see it back in March, we won't have a good product this put out there.
Of course, we can take research and keep you updated on it, and.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm with Michael, and I'm just in Ken's point of view too, that as far as the number of people that are out there at Loy Lake, that is significant. But if we're, if this is from a Main Street standpoint, we're trying to get folks to Main Street, to our local businesses, then I think it's got to be downtown. And I, but I just think the 700 block is so isolated now, that I don't know that you're achieving that result. I do worry about the scale of it as well with that block. I just think that we could nestle it somewhere else. I think that's a much better play.
Is there any way to come up with some power options and see what you have before next meeting and bring it back to another meeting to us and say, here's some power options? Because I think power.
Yeah, that's your question. You're the guy who replies when you don't.
We've visited with Encore, so I got the feeling that they wanted a little bit more specific commitment and, you know, to one location before they run all the figures they gave us estimates, but I think we can get some more information about them.
Encore tell us from where they have 483 phases availability, what's the most cost-effective location for us to head?
I think they will.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah, and I've asked that question, but it's going to take some research on their part. Thank you.
Hey, council now going to take a session pursuant to Chapter 551, text the government code to talk about complicated litigation, and also to discuss financial and economic development and the city's negotiating position and set us. Denial is 635.